I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please Patty.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Here.
Mrs. Saylor?
Here.
Mrs. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Dokes?
Here.
Colonel Henske?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Lepsis?
Here.
Dr. McCloy?
Here.
Mrs. Shoemaker?
Here.
Thank you.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, this is to announce that adequate notice that this meeting was given in the following manner. On January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was transmitted to the Burlington County Times and Central Record. Filed with the township clerk and posted in the office of the Business Administrator Board Secretary. Additional notification was made on September 24th, 2020 in the Burlington County Times to inform the public that this meeting. Was rescheduled and will be held in virtual format. Notification was also posted on both the district website and district app. I direct the Business Administrator Board Secretary to enter this statement into the minutes. Uh, start with public comment on agenda items only. Do we see any hands?
Uh, Megan, just, just over a matter, I think this is the only public comments period because this is a committee of the whole.
Yep. Okay, sorry, public comment. We still, still no hands? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to education and technology. Do I have a, uh, motion? Is everybody muted? Unmute guys, can't hear you. Second Judy?
Thank you.
Any, uh, comments or questions?
My only comment is, and I can't remember if it was one or two meetings ago. I discussed that we've really got to be careful with goals. Um, we, we need to at some stage get back to looking at the strategic plan. Which, you know, we've got Q sat coming, so we've got some other fish to fry at this point, right this second. Um, but we don't want to have multiple goals in this and then multiple goals in that and not get to any of them. And who are the goals? As I read them, they're very much what our responsibility is. In creating the, the strategic plan and working with and supporting the development of the budget. But they're not goals, they're tasks.
Okay. Anybody else comments, questions?
The one thing Judy, in terms of the strategic plan, are you talking about the strategic communication plan part of it?
No.
You mean the first part of it, the assist with development of the five-year plan?
Yeah.
That's not listed as a goal that is listed as the task that'll be done to complete the goal. Cause the goals themselves are to assist the Tabernacle District with financial efficiencies and preparing for future financial stability is goal one. And goal two is committing to, um, assist the Tabernacle School District to improve and increase parent and community stakeholder engagement. The things that follow below are the tasks that the board will undertake to make sure those goals are actually to occur. So saying this to you plan, even though it's something that the board usually does take a role in. Having it clearly outlined in here would still be acceptable because it's not the goal itself, it's what you'll be doing to help as part of. The measure to, to make sure that goal is successful.
Okay.
I agree, if it was listed as a goal, it wouldn't make sense, but you have it as listed as the activity.
Okay. A- as long as we don't lose sight of the fact that. We're, we're gonna end, we did this before. We had our strategic plan, we had our goals, we had our tasks, and we didn't get half of them done. And so we've really got to be careful on this. And that's my concern, because when I read it. Honestly, in my head, those were goals also, the way I looked at them.
Sure.
If you're feeling they're just tasks, then it's fine.
Well, I think the one thing that we could do is again, going back to the idea that sometimes some certain goals are overarching goals or your, your, your goals.
Um, yeah.
It's like these goals are rolled over. So I think really the question is not so much the tasks themselves, but the timelines would be the question. Cause right now, if you look at the timelines for the strategic plan, we talked about September to June. But the five-year goal or a five-year task, so it's not necessarily that, that, that's going to be completed within that timeline.
Right.
Things that go in that way. So for instance, your third task you have is develop a plan to meet with the Lenape District and you list that as being ongoing. So maybe it makes more sense to have it more of an open-ended completion date, so that way these are tasks, these are goals that you've had set for year, over year over year. Um, that way you're giving yourself time to say that this is something that's going to be built on and followed through in a longer period of time.
Yeah, I would, I think we should consider that. So that's it.
Okay, anybody else? Roll call.
Mrs. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Dokes?
Yes.
Colonel Henske?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lepsis?
Yes.
Dr. McCloy?
Yes.
Mrs. Shoemaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Saylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything for human resources?
I'm sorry, Meg, we did have a couple of things that are on the ed tech side of things. Below the, uh, the, they're not things that will approve, but just things to, uh, discuss as part of the committee.
Okay, so early dismissal days and remote, I thought, I just thought it was a typo, sorry. I didn't want to nitpick.
Yes, because these aren't, these aren't things to approve, so just so everyone's aware. Um, the governor and one of his executive orders did make a change and we put this in our send out last week as well. Um, that all schools in the state of New Jersey have to be closed for in-person instruction on election day. So obviously that's a big change, because in the past it was schools that were election sites had to be closed, but now this is all schools, not just schools that are being election sites. So, uh, because of that, you know, some school districts are saying, you know, they're going to close that day entirely, we, we look at that as a day that we can do. Uh, remote learning, there's no reason to close entirely since we have everything set up with the infrastructure. So the day will look a little bit differently, it will still be a, a four-hour day. Um, the students that are in sixth grade six to eight, they'll be following their schedule that they usually would do in person. Um, but online and that will be our blue, gold and virtual kids all attending live classes, live meets at one time.
Comment is already over. What is that?
Someone, uh, someone else was talking, I think. Sorry, um, anyway, so that'll be technically, we're kind of looking at it as a green day, because when you combine your blue and you combine your gold, you kind of get green. So, um, that'll be a remote day for those days, um, the same things that could happen for other early dismissal days. Similarly, on our calendar right now, before Thanksgiving, before our winter break, we also have those half days. And one of the things to work, if you're trying to figure out, well, why can't you just have the students in a half day? Well, the fact is because we're running four-hour work, four-hour days and then using the afternoon sessions for that additional time. Um, it might be something we have to look into, to use a fully virtual day on those days. Everyone attending a meet at the same time, which would encompass the same type of thing of having that four-hour day, um, being met. For our, our students in K five, they would also be logging into their, through their Google classrooms. And doing that, they could meet, um, as well, more information will be coming, but that's something like I said. For election day in particular, is the first time that'll come up. Um, as this comes up more, we'll have more information and a more detailed plan will be sent out to families to explain all of this as well. So in addition to the four hours, at least for election day, there'll be another, of another full hour in the afternoon of, um, office hours in addition to the live sessions. Um, but the big difference is, like I said, on these days, is you'll have your green, you'll have your blue and you'll have your virtual kids all learning at one time. Um, synchronously via Google Meet. So just like I said, more information is coming, but election day is the first time this will happen. We also, in terms of the next one, the NJLS SLA, NWA MAP and F and P updates on our website, we have updated our testing calendar. I know you all love all the, the wonderful acronyms out there. Um, the NJ SLA, uh, which is the New Jersey State's standardized test that happens in the springtime. Is still on the books right now, the state has not listed as to when that will occur. Okay, the state's own testing calendar listed as TBD. Um, if you did not hear, our Department of Education Secretary Betsy DeVos. Did say that it is the intention right now of the Department of Education not to issue waivers to each state. They actually issued waivers last year, which is why New Jersey did not have to end, issue standardized testing in other states as well. Um, at the current time, she has said that the Department of Education does not intend to have waivers for standardized testing for those models. So I, now that we know that information, um, once the state gives us better insight as to when that test will occur. We will create a schedule, notify parents in plenty of time as well, but right now, we at least know that we have to put it on our. To be determined schedule for the future. Um, in the meantime, we also want to make sure we're having the data points on our students, so we can look at where they are right now and where we're beheaded, which is why we did the NWA MAP test. We have started that, um, grades two through eight have already taken the reading section of that test. Um, and the next two days, our kindergarten and first grade students will be taking that and, and luckily, um, do the hard work of Mrs. Gallagher. And Mr. Bedell, we've been, and some of our teachers, we've really put a great plan in place that's enabled us to also test the virtual students. Um, at the same time, while the students are logging into Google Meet, so we can make sure that the fidelity of the test is ensured, that we can see the student taking the test. Um, and that has worked out well, and in the coming weeks, we'll send a notification home again to remind parents we've been doing the same with math. We decided to spread out the test a little bit more, especially based on the fact that students are only in a few days a week. Um, we didn't want to bombard them in the only two days or three days they're in, uh, in a given week with the two different testing sessions, so it will be coming on that one. And same thing with the Fontis and Pennell, we extended our window, usually that was done in a one or two day per class. We gave our teachers, uh, pretty much the month to get it done, because of the way that we were trying to spread it out and create more time in classroom. For actual focus on instruction, not just focus on the assessment itself. Uh, however, Fontis Pennell does not allow that test to be done in a remote setting, so thanks to the hard work of our reading specialists. We've been able to give some alternate assessments for our virtual learners, so we can still make sure we know where their reading levels are currently. Uh, and create plans in place to support them.
Sean, since this is committee of the whole, can, can we discuss a, a topic that fits with what you just spoke about?
By all means.
Yeah, so this is probably for you and Jason, maybe Patty a little bit, so. Um, there are two calendars that are, I think, very easily and readily available within the TAB Schools app. Okay, neither of those calendars lists whether Cohort A or Cohort B, whether it's gold or blue or blue or gold. Are in school on the alternating Fridays. And so there's a third calendar that is color-coded, but that one's not really easily found, at least. From my own experience and from my wife's experience, uh, within the app. So the color-coded schedule, you can find it by clicking the district website icon. Then you click on our district. Then you click on the 2020, 2021 hybrid school calendar, and then it's available for viewing. So if you go directly to the little icon that says calendar. Could we not make that the default calendar that comes up rather than listing like holidays and early closures? Or better yet, incorporate them all in together?
I will confer with Mr. Bedell and if we can make it so it's easier to, uh, to modify.
It just.
Certainly do that.
It just seems like there's, there's three places people to go and the one I want is always the last one I go to, and I, I can't be alone, so.
What were you coming?
I think, I think Dan's right too, Sean, I, I've been having that same problem, so.
I, I was going to bring this up in, in a later, well, remind me a new business, Dan, we'll come back to your topic, how's that?
That's fair, thank you, I didn't know where to put it, but I figured you'd just talk about.
Nope, no problem.
So.
No problem, we'll cover, don't worry, we're coming back.
Yeah, and Kevin, thanks for making me feel like I'm not so alone on this.
No problem.
Sorry, i- i- if I could, I just have the, the app open, it looks like the, the calendar function built into the app. It is pulling from the actual calendar part of the website, but I will add a link right in the beginning at the front of, of that. Um, color-coded calendar, make it easy for everybody.
Yeah, if you, if you even name it that, so they can understand like hybrid calendar or something like that, even better. I don't know how much, how much freedom of control you have in terms of how that icon appears. You're muted, Jason.
Sorry, I'll, I'll take care of it, it should be done before, before, uh, the end of the night.
You're ahead of my expectations, thank you.
Wow. Okay, good Sean?
All good.
Human resources, anything? Have nothing, operations, anything? Policy, first reading?
There's one new policy here, there's a bunch of mandatory changes to this policy, um, from the state, so there's really nothing to select or choose. We have to, um, incorporate everything that's in there.
Okay. Let me take a look at it. Um, unfinished business?
Uh, were we having a first reading on that? Sorry, Meg, before we go back.
Oh, we have to.
Cause doesn't have to go in sooner, the policy.
Sean?
The first reading right now, Kevin, so technically we should be voting on it.
So we, we need a vote.
Do we have to vote on it? Somebody's got to make a motion in second?
I'll make a motion.
Jones, second.
Any comments or questions?
Can we just make sure that it gets put up on the website, because we normally put them up for the first reading?
It is, it is, it is, Meg, yeah.
Okay, uh, can we do an all in favor on this one, right? Or do we have to do roll call? Patty?
I think we have to do a roll call for policy, don't we?
Okay.
Mrs. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Dokes?
Yes.
Colonel Henske?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lepsis?
Yes.
Dr. McCloy?
Yes.
Mrs. Shoemaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Saylor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any unfinished business?
I have one item if I could, um, I brought up at the last meeting. Uh, Junior National Honor Society analysis comparing to Olson academic leaders.
Something we're working on, Dan.
Dan, that is scheduled to go to an attack meeting in the upcoming weeks or months, but we figured that that would be appropriate in attack.
Ed tech.
It's coming.
Thank you.
We have reached out to the, to, um. National General Honor Society for information at this point in time, Dan.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else with unfinished business? Any new business?
Yes, um, I would like to jump, this kind of goes back to a question Dan was asking before about the, uh, issues with the website. I'll tell you something that we have been working on as an admin team. Um, and I'd like to, to ask if we can, uh, create maybe an ad hoc version, uh, ad hoc committee, so to speak. Uh, to have Jason propose some major changes over halls to the website, just so you know, this is not just, this is twofold. One, it's necessitated because, uh, we totally agree with the sentiments that you, Dan, Kevin have said, there's major issues in this website. Um, in terms of its ease of communication, it's one of our main tools to communicate with our parents, and we, we think that it's not the, uh. Easiest for people to find information on as layout. Uh, secondly, we actually found out while we were investigating this anyway, that, uh, the layout we currently use is being retired by Blackboard. Um, come January, I believe, so it's perfect timing for us anyway to revamp the website, make sure it's much more user-friendly. And Jason has been working on trying to create some proposals, but obviously we'd like to make sure we run it through a small committee of the board. Um, to make sure if there's any input, especially as things that we might see, we would like to make sure that you have a say in there as well. Um, so I know that some of you have made communication, uh, something very near and dear to your heart, not to mention any, any names specifically, Colonel. Um, but. Serve on this ad hoc committee.
Hey, Meg, you wanna nominate Steve as chair?
Yeah, really.
I nominate Steve to chair.
Wait, I got.
Wait for Kevin, wait for Kevin to second.
Okay. So we're gonna do an ad hoc committee and Steve's gonna chair it.
If Steve's chairing that committee, I'm happy to serve on it.
So Steve, Kevin?
No, well, yes.
I was just trying to slide it in there. Um, who else do you use?
Well, I, I thought, uh, I figured, Meg, we definitely want to have your input, obviously, as, as the board president, I know Judy wants to be on it, because that would be for. No, if you have no say, if you don't care, then we can have somebody else.
Um, I think it would be better if somebody else.
Fair enough.
I'm gonna pass on this one, so.
I can, I don't mind.
Kevin?
Thank you.
So Sean, Colonel Henske, Mr. Dokes and Dr. McCloy, is there anyone else? Just three, okay, thank you.
As far as who makes up the committee, I mean, is the administration and the board, um, are we including, uh, can we include the, uh, teachers? And can we also include parents or are we just keeping it?
You figure for the first part of it, at least we can meet first, um, so Jason can kind of show you some things that he's working on behind the scenes. Uh, get some input and then we can certainly have it, uh, looked at by some other people before it goes live.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, yeah, I think it's important that we get, um, of course, the teachers to beat on it and what they want to do. And then, uh, you know, put it out to some, uh, other parents other than the ones that are on the board. Who are equally sometimes frustrated with the websites and such, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, we at least wanted to get some of the groundwork, I know we, we, uh, have been looking a lot of other districts' websites. And how they've had kind of things set up to make it more, um, user-friendly. Um, and Jason's been putting some, some effort into trying to, uh, make our template or, or a new template. That would make ours, uh, just as easy access, because again, we want to make, we realize that our website is the, one of the huge points of communication to us and our community. Uh, and it's something that we all want to make sure that we're improving, obviously, it's one of our, our goals as well that we're talking about tonight. So hopefully this is something that can go a long way towards that one.
Okay. Anything else on our new business?
Uh, yes, actually. In looking at other websites and other schools, I am noticing a trend that a lot of folks are starting to develop. Some level of a plan to either go back to five days or to start to expand their calendar. One being Southampton's still at five days, I believe. Is that a requirement by the state, like have they given any guidance to? We need to start a conversation about this, or are they giving any information out to you? I know the municipalities are all going back to full-time now.
I, I have reached out to the county, uh, and asked if there's any indication of any changes in guidelines right now. And they said so far, there is nothing that's come from the Department of Education. That would indicate any sort of changes are coming in the current restrictions in schools. That doesn't mean something won't come, that just is that they have no indication of anything at the current time.
Yeah, I, we do, um, where I work, I handle a lot of the municipalities and they've all just gone back to full-time. And they were required to develop a plan prior to bringing everybody back into their buildings. So I wondered if we're hearing this from the state level or not.
Not at all. No, that, we've asked that question every meeting we have with our county, our Department of Education representatives at the county level. Um, and then so far, I've not heard anything that would indicate to expect any changes, uh, at least for the time being right now. And especially, I think that's probably going to be true, especially as we're seeing the numbers of COVID cases that are continuing to rise and the infection rate is rising in the state right now. I think they're going to be very slow to make any adjustments to schools. At least that's been the indication that's been given to me.
Sean, are we, and I, and I get all that, actually I get the, the raw data too, but do we, are we going to at least put something on paper as to what? Our plan will be, so that we can at least start vetting it now, because eventually, you know. This is gonna, and we're, we're gonna, we're gonna come out of it, and I know that, you know, we should have something. At least drafted out on paper on how we're gonna do it, just in case it, um, comes quicker than we hope. Or, uh, not hope, comes quicker than we expect.
Well, we've had multiple conversations in terms of what that, that would look like, but the part hardest part of it right now, Steve, is that we don't necessarily know what's, you know, if they're going to change. Again, they've given me, us no impression that they're going to change the six-foot spacing, anything else. So we know what school will look like, you know, if we have to get, bring people back into a, a regular environment, that's something that, you know, we've been built to, for, to handle for years. Um, so we know how to operate a schedule if that's the case. The, the hardest part is since we don't know if there's any other modifications, and again, uh, they've been given no indication so far to expect anything. That would allow a change from, you know, six foot to three foot, um, or, or, um, reducing, or I'm sorry. Further increasing capacity limits as well, so, um, those are the.
So then what are our big lymph acts then? Cause away from all the conversations that we had, big lymph act is what, space, staff and schedule? Are those our three things that we're gonna have to, is, when things change?
You're looking, oh, space, staff, schedule, um, busing, which I guess can fall under space, if you will. Um, and also you still have to adhere right now, the, the state is still requiring, obviously, to instruct remote learners as well. Which falls under staffing and other issues.
Okay, I'm just looking for one of those key milestones, start flickering when we know.
Asked, they have not given any like, hey, if it falls below this, or if it becomes, you know, point eight, or there, there, there have been no. There's been no indication to expect anything like that coming, and I can tell you that every time that we have the, the meetings, the county meetings. Um, questions are asked, you know, have you heard any occasion, should we expect anything? And there has been no, um, expectation set that these are going to be coming. So it doesn't mean that they won't, it just means that we have been, I, I'm not under the impression it's coming anytime soon.
Well, yeah. Even within the existing framework, i- is there, are there tweaks we can make, are there, there are adjustments we can make, we're a month into it now. Um, you know, it, it was a, it was a scramble, I mean, we're, we're, you want a lot of moving goalposts still. Um, yeah, but can we be more efficient, can we be? More productive with the academic time, whether things, the little things, this is nothing, you know, not saying go back to, you know, eight hours a day, five days a week. But, uh, you, I'm getting bombarded by parents in the community for, you know, we could be doing more, we could be doing better. Um, you know, last week and next week, my kid had four hours in school, uh, but how do we? We have buses with five kids on them, we have some classrooms with six kids, is, is there some? Something, anything we can be doing, even at the margins to increase the amount of educational academic time. Within the given constraints we have. Are there classrooms where we could fit more and are there grades that we could bring back more? Are there younger grades that need it the most, that we can somehow finagle more time in a classroom for? You see what I'm getting at is?
I do.
Not the magic elixir, but a- at the margins, where can we improve 5% here, 4% there, 10% here, where it, it makes a difference. Especially if, you know, early on, a comment was made, expected live with this for, you know, a, a, uh, a, a much longer period of time than I'm probably comfortable repeating. Um, so how do we constantly adapt and, and change and?
And that's something, Brian, that we actually do, we have meetings almost daily, um, looking at little things here and there, especially for, you know, some of our special needs students. You know, tweaks that we can do to provide more supports, um, we're constantly looking at things, but one of the big things to look into is when we created our plan. We created with the intention to try to enable students and parents to have, the students return. Just as we had today, we had a number of our students that were in the fully virtual setting that commit, came back for our gold cohort. We have another group coming on Tuesday, and we have more students that are coming al- already that are, we've had conversations with parents that, uh, could be coming as early as the 19th, which is our next entry point. So we've created opportunities for them to come back, as those people come back, we don't have, our classes continue to grow. Which means that we have to continue to maintain where we are. There were some districts that went for long periods of time, marking periods, two marking periods or a full year of making people commit to virtual environments. We went for the other way and said we want to create opportunities for our students to return for in-person instruction. So because of that, we also have to look at how many seats we have and keeping those seats open for those kids as they come back, because a lot of them are. And as they do come back, we have to keep them, um, I said, in terms of, of the requirements that are under us. Uh, doesn't mean that we're not looking at other things to say certain things that we can move to a virtual setting. For instance, um, Spanish is something we moved from grades K to four, it was in-person. We found a way to make our Spanish happen on the alternating days, so if you're a gold student, it happens on the, on the days that are blue, that you're not physically present. Um, it's something that we're able to make work for our K to four kids, we're working on trying to develop that for our fifth grade as well. Which will flip them again, so they would have Spanish on days they weren't there, therefore giving some time when they're physically present on something. That would then give them something else when they're not physically in the buildings. Um, so sometimes some of these tweaks are a little bit harder to make, um, especially trying to make sure we're working with the, again, going back to some of the things that Steve outlined. In terms of staffing restrictions, time and stuff like that, and also some guidelines from the state. Um, but it's things that we are continually finding ways that we can try to in- increase our instructional opportunities for our students.
So Sean, on that note, and, and I agree with the concept of giving people more, you know, more checkpoints, more gateways back. Now that we're a month into it, and we'll be six weeks into it by the time next comes around. Should we start to look at a longer period of time between reopening doors for those who chose to be virtual? Um, we're, we're, we're far enough along now that people kind of get a sense of what does virtual look like, what does in-person look like? In order to plan longer term as a district, should we say, okay, uh, you know, starting in November. Those checkpoints only come out once a month and starting in January, they come out once per marking period or somewhere in between, so that we can. so that we can have more certainty, more early certainty for those who are in the building so that we can maximize what we have and not have to worry about, okay, but in two weeks, I got to leave this much capacity open because every two weeks might be taken advantage of it. Maybe it makes sense for us to extend that decision point out further so we get more certainty earlier for, for planning purposes.
If you're.
Brian, while, while I appreciate your sentiment there to try and make it a little bit more predictable in the future, I think we need to be careful about how far we extend that out. I know personally, I'd be more amenable to going to a month and going to a marking period. But I think we need to be careful because part of the discussion when we made that decision as well was if God forbid, something were to happen in a family situation and they weren't able to continue at home, even though that was their intention. The plan was to allow those children to come back because we don't want to exclude our children from having whatever the best and most educational setting is for their kids, for their education as they go through this year.
And it may be emergent situations, I get it, but I, I think we need to make the, the best of what we have and there's gotta be some compromise because by keeping that every two weeks, if we're holding ourselves back on the in-person portion, we need to find that compromise and be able to provide the best for everybody and not maintain empty seats if we can extend the educational in-person educational experience because we have certainty that, okay, for at least the next X number of, you know, weeks, days, absent emergency circumstances, you know, like as a district, I think we'll always take emergency circumstances under consideration. But as a default rule, it's not every two weeks you get to make up your mind and I'm going to hold this much capacity in reserve. Six weeks into it.
I, I think.
We kind of know where we are now.
Brian, I, I think that feels very discriminatory towards families who situations may be changing. I think that when you look at our, where we send our kids, Seneca, it's basically 48 hours notice. Other school districts are doing a marking period. I think every two weeks is a very solid and respectful to our staff to be able to prepare to families because things change and COVID numbers change. And that's what we told the community. I think being six weeks in and saying, we're going to change it and already talk about putting it out. I, I think it's disingenuous to our original plan. I, I think maybe if we're two, three months, like three, four months in, maybe that's the time, but right now, things are changing fast. And I, I think that that is the wrong attitude for us to have. I think we should really be honest and say every two weeks is a balancing act between giving staff preparation and being respectful to families, regardless of whether they're virtual or hybrid.
And if you were talking, just so you know, Brian, going back to your question there in terms of being able to juggle things around in terms of spacing, unless you really made it a marking period based decision, it would be too difficult to move things back and forth, month by month. Because of the amount of, of, of work it would do in terms of also changing teaching assignments and things like that. So really, unless you were doing a marking period cutoff points, it really wouldn't buy much by changing it from once a month to twice a month.
Sure. And today, this is the wrong answer, but in January, that might be a more appropriate timeframe once we're that far along in the in the new reality. At some point, we have to, we gotta continue to strive to do better. And we're working on the very difficult, near impossible situations, but we, we gotta find ways to maximize the, the in-person instructional time for those who are getting it while still providing the robust virtual for those who choose to have it, but to allow people to flip flop back and forth where it really impacts both sets of students. Because we can't maximize either one if we don't have certainty where you're going to be tomorrow. And again, absent emergent circumstance, I'm not, you know, trying to downplay that, but we do need to be able to plan and plan it effectively and for some period of time for more than, you know, 10 school days at some point. I throw it out there as, again, on the margin, what can we at a district do to, to just do better? Especially if we're looking at a, you know, a full school year or perhaps even more of this type of arrangement. Now, I think we have to challenge ourselves and think outside the box and try to get those next milestones. And, you know, and then to Colonel Henskey's comments, if, if we knew that tomorrow the CDC came out and said, you know, three feet is just as good as six feet, would we be able to pivot and react to that as quickly as possible? Or is that, if we, if that happens, are we still in a position where we can't do what we want to do?
We can react pretty quickly.
Sean.
If the first, just going, wait one second, Gail, if the first question was in terms of spacing changes, spacing is an easier thing to adjust and some other things. So if, if the restriction was from six to three, that, you know, the hardest thing is getting the desk we have in storage and bringing them back out and rearranging that. So.
Is three feet the, is three feet the elixir? I mean, is that the?
No. It still creates difficulty no matter what because you're still not going to have, it gives you a couple of kids more, but not a lot, you know what I mean? I, I wish I could tell you it did, but it's, it's more than what we currently have, but doesn't, if you're looking for what's going to bring, you know, it's called all hybrid kids back every day, it's more than that.
And that's our main lymph act.
Yeah, we'd like to think our goal is five days full time for those who choose to come in person. And then, okay, what are the, what are the obstacles in the way? And what obstacles can we influence and what obstacles are totally outside of our zone of influence and we're waiting for guidance from higher powers? I mean, I think, Steve, if that's what you were.
That's exactly what, you know, yeah, what are our big lymph acts that we can affect and we can plan through? What are the things that we're obviously waiting on the state for and what can we wait for like CDC? So as the environment changes and we want to have, you know, to Brian's point, and I know Gail is, Gail is dying to talk, I'm sorry, Gail. I know, give me one sec and, you know, what, where? You know, where do we know when we can pivot and when we can, can go on? Because I do, I, I agree with, with Brian as far as the increase in the time. I, I understand circumstances develop and, and we need to be very flexible with our families, especially in this environment. But trying to get a little bit longer, I think actually helps us. You know, longer decision-making points, people can plan on a quarter, people can plan on a semester. I think if they know that, then that gives you probably, I would think that gives us better flexibility on how we're, I'm structuring that semester. So I mean, I, and to, to Meg, I, I'll disagree with Meg, if he's disagreeing with Brian, so I guess I'm agreeing with Brian to disagree with Meg. So anyway, Gail, your turn.
Thank you.
Go, Gail, go, go, Gail, go.
Well, I was, I was curious as to what percentage of parents have decided to go to in-person, what percentage switch from in-person to remote? And if a lot of parents want to come back regardless of what the CDC says, if, if more parents want to come back, we might not be able to accommodate them under the current situ, the current guidelines. You get all that?
I'm sorry, my son came running into the room screaming that my wife missed something with the baby and I, I missed something, Gail, I apologize.
Number one, way, way back when a Christopher's came to me. Okay, there's three, I'll do one at a time. Number one, what percentage have come back to the school?
I don't have that exact percentage for you, Gil.
Okay, um, is there an example of one particular grade where when the parents came back, it increased the class size in that one particular classroom?
Well, today was only the first day that students came back, Gil. Tomorrow will be the second one. So obviously all the students that are coming back are increasing the class size, but if you're saying overall for an entire grade, they're, they're not.
Well, in particular, in, you know, Mrs. Smith's class that she have nine and now it could go up to 12.
Look more into that to see if there's falling within one grade, one class. I don't think they really fell. I think they were just kind of all over the place.
Okay. And the other question, number two was, have any of them left the school and gone to remote?
We have a couple that are considering it, recalling to ask about the process.
Okay. And the third one was if a lot do want to come back and since they're separated by alphabet into their blue and gold, I guess there could be situations where technically they might go into the blue group, but if there's no room, then they would go into the gold group. But I think you mentioned that one time before that would happen when they came back.
There are situations where that could happen, Gil. And again, sometimes it's also up to the parent when we're saying, hey, you know, you can come back and if we have this basic and make some certain things work, we've had some of those conversations. Name is consistent that, you know, for instance, i- if, if a class has one boy in it or no boys in it, you know, they say, hey, if I come back on, on this day, can I, my son be around other boys? And, you know, sometimes we, we've had some of those requests as well.
Because my concern is if it increases, if more parents want to send them back, we want to make sure we have room for those children.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we're, we're being very cognizant as we created our classes and, and made sure our class list enable us to bring the kids back. We have space for every single student that is currently on a virtual day to.
Oh, great, great.
That we, we were very cognizant in doing that and created backup plans in other classrooms if need be. But that was one of the biggest obstacles this summer was trying to make sure that we had classes as balanced as possible to enable students to return.
Okay, that's good. Well, that almost, if we did go back to full time, you're almost there to accommodate all those children if you've already considered it now. Okay.
Exactly. The, the obstacle itself wouldn't be that piece of it. The obstacle is i- if we continue, well, i- in terms of you're saying full time is again, don't forget that the state has said that at least for the time being that remote learning has to be continued. So even if we brought the students back full time and this is a full day, there's twofold of the issue actually. One is making sure you're meeting the needs of the full, the virtual students. But two, even if we brought the students back, when I say, we have the room set up for these students in a given cohort, the gold or blue kids, not all kids combined into a classroom, which is not the spacing for that one. So based on, on that fact, you know, when you increase in the school day, you have to still find a way to make sure you're giving the instructional time for the students who aren't physically in the building that day. And our schedule has, has based around having opportunities for the teachers in the afternoon to interact with the virtual learner, the, the students who are virtual on that given day in that cohort. And that's one of the obstacles to overcome as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, I, I had a quick thing. I just wanted to give a shout out to Jason. He's already made the change on the district app, so thank, thank you. Before we reen off the meeting, you took your video off for about six seconds and that must have been what you were doing. Thank you for that. It looks great. Gail, I also had the same question about, you know, are, are there, are there flat families that are, that are flexing out of in-person and going full remote? And comparing that, that movement to those that are coming out of full remote and going to the hybrid model? Sean, with, without giving any specific details, can, do you have a high level sense on what the decision point is for the families who are now wanting and willing to, to come back to hybrid?
I think it's different things depending on the family, Dan. You know, I think some just they saw how it was working. They're willing to have their kids come back, you know, based on, I think some of them had different questions in terms of are students going to wear masks the full day? Are they able to handle this? Different things. Some is just, you know, they want more of the, even though it's an every other day thing, they like having that schedule for their child. You know, having the fully virtual, it's a bit of a different schedule that the family might be creating, even though they have the, you know, the access points at different times during the day. So I don't think there's been one consistent answer. But I, I think a number of them are, is that I'm, I'm very curious to hear after the first week if, you know, how their experience is when they return. But I can tell you, if you, seeing a few of the students that came in this morning, you know, they were excited to be back in the building. So it's good to see them.
Yeah, cool. Thank, thank you. I, I know, you know, we're all, we're all dealing with a lot of uncertainty for our own kids and all the kids and we're, you know, we're, you always second guess, right? What, what you're doing. So I'm just curious, those that are making the change, what's, what's fostering the, the reconsideration of something different?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
No problem.
My, my question originally was not to take away from anything virtual. My question was, is that, you know, one, there's clearly some conversation going on discussing it with the folks that I work with. Two, other schools around us are doing five days and virtual, right? Because they can manage that. I think we could too. And three, as a teacher myself, you've got a population of staff that are teaching three different classes of groups for every single subject. So we've got to look at more efficiencies. And I didn't even phrase it that way until everyone else started discussing it. It, that's a lot of what we've got to be careful of. You know, we can't burn each other out in all this process. And believe me, I'm one of those moms who's emailing all the time. So I know I'm probably burning out a few folks and I'm going to owe them lunch, dinner and something else, I'm sure by the end of the year.
I'll, I'll echo Judy's concerns. I am, I'm very concerned about the staff. I'm very concerned about how hard everybody in the administration and the teachers are working in order to juggle all this. And, and if we don't figure, I know you're, I commend Sean, you and Melissa and the entire administration working with the staff to do it, but that's my number one concern is, you know, if we, giving a lot of options to a lot of different folks is great. It provides flexibility, but in the same token, it's terribly demanding on, on you all. And so anything, I'm willing to support anything that you and Melissa can see to get us more consolidate our, our ability. I mean, flexibility is a key, key to air power is what we always see in the military. But it also, it also puts a huge strain on, on the forces and, and I think a number of us share the concern on the boards, share the concern about what's going on. And we, we're hearing it from our, our, the people on the staff that, you know, they're working really, really hard and we commend them completely for that. And we, and we, and we love them to death, but we also want to, you know, our responsibility is not only to take care of the kids, but also make sure that we're helping you take care of the staff. So anything we can do in the forward is, is, you're going to get support from, from, I think, all of us.
Thank you. That's very much appreciated. It is a very unique year that's requiring an awful lot of every single person involved. And I know that's not just those that are within the building, but those that are without. I know I've talked to a lot of parents and I know it's putting a lot on them. It's putting a lot on the, you know, our staff. It's putting a lot on everybody that's involved in education right now, like I said. So I appreciate that sentiment.
Okay, anybody else? New business? All right, seeing none, we're going to go into an executive session for real quick. Where a statute allows for a public body to go into closed session during a public meeting. And whereas the Board of Education of the Tabernacle Township School District has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain matters which are exempt from the public. And whereas the regular meeting of this Board of Education will reconvene at the conclusion of the closed session at approximately. What do you think, Sean? Seven fifteen, seven ten?
Yeah, let's go seven, ten.
Seven, ten.
We get back.
Was that? Therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Tabernacle Township School District will go into closed session for the following reasons as outlined by statute. Any collective bargaining agreement or the terms and conditions of which are proposed for inclusion in any collective bargaining agreement, including the negotiation in term, of terms and conditions with employees or representatives of employees of the public body. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby declares that it's, that its discussion of the aforementioned subject may be made public at the time when the Board Attorney advises the Board of Education that the disclosure of the discussion will not detrimentally affect any right, interest or duty of the school district or any other entity with respect to said discussion. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education for the aforementioned reason hereby declares that the public is excluded from this portion of the meeting during which the above discussion shall take place and hereby directs the Board Secretary to take the appropriate action to effectuate the terms of this resolution. Do I have a motion? Moved, Vicky. Vicky, second.
Kevin.
Kevin. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All abstain? All right, we'll be back.
Thank you.